I want to welcome everyone. I'm Councilmember Helen Rosenthal, representing Manhattan's Upper West Side. This is our first Zoom NYCHA Town Hall, and I'm very excited that we have a terrific panel who's going to be available to you to answer questions. Before we get started, I would like to ask our City Council Speaker Cory Johnson to say a few words. I appreciate your joining us, Speaker. I know you've stepped away from another meeting to do so. But welcome.
Thank you, Helen. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me join on this important Tele Town Hall today. And I want to thank Councilmember Rosenthal in her office for organizing this important roundtable. For everyone that's watching, you should know, you probably know this already, but your council member, Councilmember Rosenthal, has literally been working around the clock the last, I don't know, 70-something days that we have been doing this. I get text messages from her at 2:30 in the morning, and then she's texting me again at 7:30 in the morning, always coming up with innovative, thoughtful ideas on how to protect the most vulnerable New Yorkers, and always, of course, talking about public housing and the public housing developments in her district. She's on the budget negotiating team, and she is an extraordinary leader on our budget negotiating team, given her experience the last almost seven years in the council. But in a previous life, she worked at the Office of Management and Budget during the 1980s, I believe, when the city wasn't in the greatest fiscal shape. And so her experience has been incredibly helpful to us during the last painful two and a half months. I also want to thank the NYCHA Chair and CEO Greg Russ for taking time today and participating. When we talk about public housing and the residents of public housing, we need to make sure that public housing residents always have a seat at the table and have their voices heard, that we're not talking about them, we're speaking with them on what they think the solutions should actually be. And that's why Councilmember Rosenthal, what she's doing today is so very important. COVID-19, as you all know, has hit NYCHA very, very hard. More than, I believe, 1,000 NYCHA residents have died because of COVID-19, and at least, I think, 6,600 have tested positive, though the number could be far higher than that. This is sadly not a surprise. NYCHA residents are particularly vulnerable to COVID-19, given everything that we have been seeing. One in five New Yorkers who live in public housing are senior citizens, and NYCHA residents also have higher incidence rates of diabetes and asthma and other chronic health conditions. And these factors put them at more risk than the general population for the really horrible effects from this pandemic. Councilmember Rosenthal and I have heard many times that NYCHA residents need more protective hygiene supplies, gloves and masks and hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies. And we need to ensure that NYCHA residents have access to proper healthcare and proper supplies, and also food. We know that food is such a big issue right now for so many NYCHA residents, especially seniors. The city has taken some steps, like increasing access to free testing, providing some of that food I just spoke about for seniors, and increasing the amount of protective personal equipment and cleaning of the buildings in certain areas. This is all critical, but we know that there is more work to be done. And that is why Councilmember Rosenthal is having this important Tele Town Hall today to hear from you and to learn more about what we, as a city, can do to better serve NYCHA residents. NYCHA has been left behind for far too long, even before COVID-19 hit. And as we work to reimagine our city, supporting public housing, and the women and men who live in NYCHA must be at the top of that list. I want our city to come back stronger and better than what we were before this. I have no doubt that we can do that if we get our priorities straight. We survived the Great Depression. We survived the fiscal crisis of the 1970s. We survived 9/11. We survived the Great Recession of 2008 and 2009, and we survived Hurricane Sandy. Time and again, people have tried to count New York out, and we have always proved them wrong. And the reason we bounce back every time is because we look out for one another. And we will continue to do that for one another during this crisis. And together, we will make sure that the greatest city in the world stays that way. So I want to thank all of the residents and leaders for joining us here today. I know that Councilmember Rosenthal is going to introduce some of the amazing TA presidents that are on the line. I want to thank them especially. They have been doing unbelievable work, helping the folks in their developments with critical needs. So thank you to all of you. And again, I want to thank Councilmember Rosenthal for having me, and we look forward to hearing from you all. Please stay safe, stay healthy, and let Helen's office or my office know if there's anything that you need. Thank you, Helen.
You know, Speaker Johnson, it's been such an honor to get you, to know you as Speaker of the Council. But we've all been put under a test over the last nearly three months now. And the way you've risen to the occasion is exemplary. And I'm so proud to serve with you and under your leadership. You're just a pleasure to work with. And you're trying so hard to make sure everyone's needs are met, but also with the deep understanding of a $10 billion deficit that the city is facing. You're such a calm leader, but very wise, and you get us all going in the right direction. And I will also add, you know, you have terrific staff around you, and that's always the mark of a good leader. Your staff has been a pleasure to work with when you're not available. So I want to thank you for your leadership. New York City is lucky to have you. We need you for a good, long time. And, and, and we'll talk soon.
Thank you. I have to hop to Democratic Conference, so I apologize, everyone, for cutting out, but I look forward to hearing what Helen reports back. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you, Speaker. Stay safe.
Thanks, Chair.
All right. So we already have 90 people on the teleconference, as well as folks on Facebook. That's going great. I really want to thank the Speaker for taking a minute to join us. This man is a busy man, and he's doing a hell of a job, so I really appreciate him. I do want to echo just a few of the sentiments. You know, clearly, COVID-19 has intensified many of the issues that NYCHA residents have been dealing with for years. So we're going to be asking about and learning about how the buildings are being kept safe and sanitary during the pandemic. And we also know that residents may not, may be losing their ability to pay rent. In addition to that, we have all the longstanding issues of repairs and everything that needs to be fixed, buzzers, doors, elevators, bathrooms. So we're anxious to hear about this as well. My office, as you know, is here to advocate for NYCHA residents, so you can stay in your home, stay safe. Visit our website, HelenRosenthal.com, for the contact information for my staff, especially and especially want to give a shout out to Vivian Rivera, who works with all of our public housing tenants and the leaders. She is exceptional. She's been an exceptional liaison. You know, I have massive gratitude for her. You can call my office at 212-873-0282 to reach Vivian. Leave a message for her, and she will get back to you as quickly as possible. That's 212-873-0282. On my website, we have a page with all of the COVID-19 updates, including specific resources for NYCHA tenants. So you can go there to learn more about what resources are available during the pandemic. Let's get started. We're very grateful to be joined by our NYCHA Chairman Gregory Russ and his staff, and the person who we all know, because we work with him all the time, Vice President for Intergovernmental Relations, Brian Honan. They are going to make very brief, very brief presentations, but we're, we've been collecting questions from you all. So after their presentations, we're going to be asking the questions that you have already sent in. If, as we go along, you have additional questions, you can type those into the Zoom chat function. If your question is personal or about your particular unit, if you could please remember to click on Vivian's name, then your question and your contact information will only go to her. All of your information will be kept private. And so Chairman Russ, I'm gonna just give this one little lead-up story. Yesterday, I was at 74 West 92nd Street firing and speaking with the tenants about this town hall. I hit all 22 elevator banks. It was very good exercise. And a woman said to me, you know, I was saying to her, I hope you, you log in. And she said, "Look, I'm on Zooms all day long with my union, with my job, and I don't see any action coming out of those Zooms. Why should I spend time on yours? When does NYCHA ever listen to us? Nothing changes." You know, she stopped me in my tracks, because while I understand that her pessimism is the years upon years of disappointment, and, and yes, there's more than a kernel of truth in what she said, I assured her that this would be different, that we have a new chair, and that we are doubling down, the city is doubling down to make sure our tenant resident, our NYCHA residents are served, and that, in fact, from this Zoom, she will see some action. So with that, Chair Russ, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Councilmember, thank you so much, and thank you for hosting today and to your staff for helping to set this up. I'm going to introduce some of the folks that are on the call from the NYCHA side. Vito Mastichello, who's the General Manager, Brian Honan, you've already mentioned. I've got Sadiya Sherman, who's Resident Engagement and Partnerships, Dan Green, who's our Director of Compliance, and I think also Monica Martinez and my Chief of Staff, Joey Koch, are also helping. And to your point, I'm going to make a short comment. NYCHA is in a place now where we are compelled to make changes. And this is truly the case, both because we want to change, but also because we have to do the changes necessary to meet the requirements that have been placed on us by the agreement we signed with HUD and the Southern District. And there's some things in that agreement, in the work we have to do, that really unify change opportunities, and we intend to take advantage of those. And those changes are going to relate to basic compliance. And Dan Green is Director of the Compliance Department. That was one of the departments that was created by the agreement, along with Quality Assurance that reports to Vito and Environmental Health and Safety. These are three new departments that, as you'll see later, collaborate together on monitoring the vendor contracts for cleaning. But the second thing I'll say with respect to the comments the resident made, one of our fundamental issues is going to be recapitalizing the buildings. And you'll hear me talk about this quite a bit, because one of the reasons we have the repair issues we do, in part, not totally, is because we need to invest in the apartments residents live and invest a lot in those apartments to lift them up and make them better. It's been far too long since that has happened. We're going to pursue that, and I hope in the next weeks and months, begin to give folks some hope for not only changes in the way we do work, but changes in the units that they live in. And the areas and topics we're going to cover in some of your questions, a quick summary, because I was going to make them part of a short presentation, but instead, I think we can do the Q and A. We're going to talk about the sanitizing efforts with the vendors. We're going to talk about the trash disposal. The mayor's had a protective gear initiative where all NYCHA residents were mailed gloves and masks and information on COVID that is either still going on or near completion. We're going to talk about the food supply and how NYCHA is connecting to the food efforts. And we're going to talk about responding to repairs during COVID. So those are questions on the list. I do want to give Brian a chance to talk a little bit about the other point you made, the rent hardship when folks lose income. And Brian can talk to that, because we, we have an opportunity there. Families who live in NYCHA pay rent based on income, and if they lose income, we're going to be adjusting it. So I'm going to let Brian talk a little bit about that.
Thank you so much, Chairman. So the COVID-19 crisis is, we all know, is a health crisis, but it is also an economic crisis, an economic crisis that in some ways is just as stressful as the health crisis that we're going through. So NYCHA, and you know, government is not known for being fast. And that's true across the board, no matter what agency you're dealing with, no matter what level of government you're dealing with. But I'm proud to say, in this instance, we have really acted quickly, thanks to the leadership of the Chair and the General Manager and the staff who works on these issues. So all public housing residents only pay 30% of their income towards rent. And what makes public housing special compared to all other types of housing? Whether it be rent control, or rent stabilized housing, or other types of housing in New York City, NYCHA residents can have their income, their rent reduced when their income drops. And so that process usually takes at a minimum about two months and requires you to run around and get a bunch of documentation that you submit to NYCHA. And we do what is known as an interim recertification. Over the last few weeks, we revised this process, and we've made it possible for you to, number one, self-certify. So this way, you don't need documents in order to do it. All you have to do is tell us that you've lost income. Either you've lost your job, or you've lost income through reduced hours, due to COVID or not COVID. All you have, all you have to do is tell us that you've lost income. Number two, and you'll self-certify. Number two, we will process those a lot quicker, and we've made it a lot easier to do so. So there are three ways to do this. Number one, and the fastest way to do this is to do it online. And the way to do that is to go to selfserve.nycha.info. From there, you can, they'll ask you a few questions, no more than six questions, and you can self-certify. What they're going to ask you is, number one, to identify the name of the person in the house or the loss of income. Number two, provide the dates of employment for the, and the job where the person lost income from. Number three, provide the type of income that was lost. And then the last, and if you do have documents that you can submit at that time, please do, but there's not necessary. And then you click on self-certify, and it's that easy. This will be processed in three weeks, but it takes effect from the time that you actually submit the document. So if you lose your job in the morning, in the afternoon, go home and please automatically do this, file for the interim recertification, and you'll want to get the ball rolling right away. Now, if you do not like to use computers, we've got other answers for you, too. You can call the Customer Contact Center and press number five and do this by phone. And if you don't like that option, you can go to the Management Office. So the three separate ways to do it, all of them are fast, all of them are easy, and all of them get to you the benefits that you deserve. So please take advantage of that. Many thousands of residents are already taking advantage of it, but there's no reason why you should suffer economically if you're a public housing resident because of the COVID crisis.
Wow. Thank you, Brian. That was so helpful and so clear. So, you know, we're gonna, yeah, exactly, same. We're gonna have this Zoom left on, on Facebook so people can reference it. And, and that was just so helpful. And Chair Russ, really appreciate your willingness to take on these questions. I actually, just to remind people, although questions are already coming in from the chat room, so that's great. So, but you, everyone can submit questions via the chat function. If you want to keep your question private, your name and your personal information, please only click on Vivian Rivera's name, and that question will go directly to her. And I believe we've also been joined by PSA 6 Sergeant Stephen Lane. I think he's on via phone, so if there are any public safety questions, you should feel free to ask those as well, and he can answer them. And lastly, if you're listening by phone, please feel free to follow up with our office with any questions. Again, 212-873-0282. An extension 202 goes directly, directly to Vivian Rivera. I think, I think I'd like to let the tenant leaders really ask the questions. We have Polly Spain, who's the tenant leader at 120 West 94th Street, Wasura. Polly, do you want to start? It may have caught you off guard.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Chair, Greg Russ, and Dan Green, Sadiya Sherman, and Brian Honan, and the rest of the panel here. Brian, I want to thank you, because that was one of the questions that I had submitted in reference to the recertification process. I'm glad to hear that the option of doing it by phone is being provided. One of the questions that I had is, will there be a follow-up with tracer devices to scan the public spaces to determine whether or not the application by the Alliance personnel of disinfectant is effective? So Brian, or, you know, the Chair, Gregory Russ.
Sure. Polly, let's, let's start with, what I'd like to do is describe a little bit of how the cleaning is taking place now. This actually gets to one of the other questions, so we might overlap a little. And then I want to tell you, I have, I'd like Vito to, to do that. And then Dan Green is going to talk about how we're validating and verifying. And I want to say something about the staff I have with me today. Really, Vito, Dan, and Sadiya, these are folks that just, they're great partners and wonderful to work with and have the same focus that we have in the call today, and I appreciate that. So I am going to ask Vito to describe what the cleaning is doing, and then Dan to describe how we're monitoring it in response to your question.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you for, for the question. So on March 11th, very early on in the pandemic, we had actually started using a company called United EastCo to disinfect our senior buildings. And that initiative started on the 11th, and we disinfect those buildings five times per week. On March 13th, just a few days later, we started the same type of sanitizing or disinfecting at our family buildings, which takes place three times a week. And the focus of this disinfectant, the disinfecting process, is to focus on the touchpoints, the high-traffic areas. So we are focused on the building door handles, the pushbars, the mailboxes, the elevated control buttons, hopper door handles. And this is in place and will continue for the months to come. What we also did, too, is, because we heard from a lot of our residents that the interior cleaning of the hallways was not being done properly. And one thing we found was that the cleaning product that the authority had been using for the last decade or more did not have a disinfectant product in it. It was just a cleaner. So we went out and sourced a new product. That is a combination of both a cleaner as well as a disinfectant. And to further that, we had started to onboard additional caretakers to help with the responsibilities of not only keeping the grounds clean, but also to keep the interior of the buildings clean. So we've been focused on bringing on per diems and seasonals. We have onboarded a little over 900 additional staff through the per diem hiring. I'm happy to report that about 49% of those new hires are NYCHA residents.
Wow.
So it's, yeah, so it's really been successful. In total, again, we will have about 1,200 additional caretakers onboarded as seasonals. And that's great for us, too. Because it also then creates a hiring pool for us for permanent positions as we lose caretakers through normal attrition. And we, yeah, thank you. Dan, as, as the Chair had mentioned earlier, Dan Green and staff from QA, our Quality Assurance Unit, our Environmental Health and Safety Unit, as well as the Office of the Inspector General, have done absolutely incredible work monitoring the performance of the contractors. And we just don't monitor the performance. We actually have made improvements to the process as issues have been identified. And before I turn it over to Dan, I will say that that's an ongoing process, right? We want to continue to improve on the level of service that we provide. We want to address concerns that are raised by the residents. So that's a process that, again, will continue. We think that this has been a great model for how we should be doing business going forward and not just focused on this particular service that we're providing. So with that, though, I'd like to turn it over to Dan, who can talk about all the efforts that he and his team have been undertaking.
Oh, thank you, Vito. And I think the, the name under my picture comes up as Brian Honan, but I'm Dan Green. I'm the Chief Compliance Officer at NYCHA. And to answer your question about the, about the tracer testing, so, so one of the advantages of having the three new departments that are, that are required by the agreement is we have some great experts now that can look into these issues from a technical perspective and make a decision on them. So when, when this initiative started, our Environmental Health and Safety Department did look into doing like a tracer test, or they call it a QPCR test, to see the, whether the, the, the treatment was effective. However, in consultation with public health experts and academic professionals, we ultimately decided that that was not an effective way to, to determine the efficiency effectiveness, because we're not like in a medical facility. These are, these are active, heavy-use buildings, and therefore, that type of, that type of follow-up is not really going to give you the information that you wanted. Instead, what we focus our monitoring on is really three, three key things. First of all, we want to make sure that the vendor is adhering to their schedule. So as the GM mentioned, in family developments, it should be three times per week. In senior developments, it's five times per week. And, and we, we really track them to make sure that they are keeping to their schedule, that they're signing the law, that they're, that they're showing up when they're required to show up to do that, to do that treatment. The second thing that we want to make sure they, they have is they're using the proper chemicals. So we make sure that every, every, every bottle is labeled, that all the supervisors have the documentation on their persons at the time, and that the chemicals that they use are on the EPA end list, which is the list that means that these chemicals can treat for COVID-19. So we, we make sure that what they're using is going to actually do the job that we expect. The third thing that we look at is following the process. So as, as the GM mentioned, we have the QA department primarily. So, as, as the GM mentioned, we have the QA department primarily with the EHS department and, and the IG have field inspectors out there every single day that are, that are making sure that they're following the process. And we've educated our building staff on what the process is as well, so they can do spot checks. And the, the key thing is that they, when they spray on that solution, they have to let it sit on that surface for 10 minutes because that gets to the disinfection that, that you want to see per the, you know, per the EPA, per what the chemicals can do. So, what we really do is we really drilled it into the contractors that they need to let it sit on the surfaces for the adequate period of time. And we've also worked with them, as the GM mentioned, in terms of improving their process using, using cleaner claws, switching out their claws more frequently, making sure their staff are wearing uniforms. And so, all of these things are things that we do to improve the quality. If there is an issue at a particular site, we will send out our teams to make sure that we do a deeper dive out there to make sure that that particular team is following the processes. So, I know that as part of the preparation, there might be some issues that couple of the development. And if that's the case, one of the advantages of a compliance department is to have, you can, you can make a complaint to us at any period of time, raise an issue, not just about the vendors, but about anything. And you can do that both on NICA's webpage by going to submit a concern, and that goes directly to the compliance department, and we review it every single day and refer to EHS and QA as necessary. You can also call us nine to five, Monday through Friday, by calling the CCC and choosing menu option number seven. And by choosing an option, you can speak to a representative who will take in your concern or complaint, and we will investigate it. So, if you have any concerns about these vendors, if they're, if they're not behaving professionally, if they're not doing the work that they're supposed to be doing, let us know. And we are going to go out there and, 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 and check on, check on that team. And we have, as, as the GM noted, we raise these concerns with the vendors almost on a daily basis throughout the whole city. Overall, we've seen a great deal of improvement, but, but issues still come up, and you just have to let us know, and we will go out there and investigate and, and make sure that vendors address it.
Dan, I've already got, Dan, just so you know, I've already gotten the names of a couple of buildings in the chat that, where they would really appreciate someone going to double-check. One is Douglas, 865 Columbus Avenue. And, uh, let's see. And then I think Douglas has a couple of addresses, so, so let's just say Douglas, the whole development. And I actually, one of the complaints seems to be an infrequency of cleaning. Another complaint seems to be about personality and, and sort of saying, you know, maybe the employees are not happy themselves, and they seem to take it out on the residents. And that comment is coming in from a number of tenant leaders.
So, we, we look into both of those issues, protocol and vendor professionalism. So, if particular vendor staff are not behaving appropriately, we will make the changes that we need to, to make them behaving, behaving professionally. So, we will look into that issue at Douglas. And any other, any other development that you want us to look into, we're happy to, happy to investigate it, to see what the issues are and to, to address it if necessary.
Great. Next, we're going to hear from Cynthia Tibbs, who is our amazing tenant leader for the brownstones, which are particularly challenging. But she's been a terrific advocate for her tenants for a long time. So, Cynthia, do you have a next question?
Sure. As, as he had just stated, we had discussed this earlier regarding compliance with Alliance and the cleaning. Tenants are now becoming intimidated by them, where they don't want to report them because they're so rude and nasty. I myself witnessed last week when we were handing out sanitizers that all they do is stand outside, running off at the mouth, and they literally have not cleaned anything. They were spraying their bottles on the wrought iron fences outside the buildings. So, even though you're saying that they're signing in and, you know, they're using the right stuff, that's not helping us if they're not entering the buildings and cleaning. And currently, they are not doing that at all as far as any of the developments. There are six developments at Wise. There are many developments at Douglas. We have all complained regarding Alliance's professionalism. And we have broached these emails constantly to our acting Borough Director, Mr. Carl Walton, who dismisses it unless we have videos. So, now you want to place us in a situation where if we do videos or we take pictures of them, we're going to wind up going head-to-head with them outside, and that's not where to put us in that position.
I don't want that.
Hi. And first off, nobody should have to feel intimidated by any vendor. That's not, it's just not acceptable. And I know from past discussions with Vito and Dan on vendor performance, when we've had issues with crews, we've been very clear to the vendor what the expectation is. So, that's, that's the first thing I want to say. The second is, when you contact the compliance department and reach out to them, and you want to share a picture or something, that's not going to be necessarily distributed to the vendor at all. That's going to be used by either Dan's staff or one of the other departmental staffs, perhaps to figure out what the best way to do the onsite inspection ought to be. You know, based on the information that you provide to compliance, we're not distributing that information to the vendor. There's a wall there because we, we don't want to put you in a position where someone says, hey, I saw you take a picture of me. I'm going to, you know, get attitude on it. And the last thing, I know we talked a little bit about this. Dan's got a group of folks he's working with for the daily field visits. So, we could work something out in terms of checking up. I'm going to let Dan speak to what he might be able to do in terms of following through on your concern that you're not seeing folks.
Okay. We don't see them enter the buildings. We see them outside, running off to the, that's not the problem. The issue is.
We could, we can check on that, I think.
Yeah, and I, I'm happy to make a trip up there myself this week to go check on it. They should be absolutely entering the buildings. And, you know, looking at our numbers, we have, we have gone to inspect the buildings managed by Wise 17 times. But we can always go more. This is, as, as the GM noted, this is an ongoing process. This is not one and done. And so, if that team has a problem and they're not entering the buildings, that is not what we're paying them to do. And I'll go come up here during the week and we'll check it out to make sure that they're not, they're not either being rude and that they're, that they're there to do their job. And we will make changes. As the GM said, we will make changes with these teams, and we will not tolerate unprofessionalism.
And, you know, Dan, what you might want to do, or whoever, is come out and see what Ms. Tibbs is talking about because each of the buildings in Wise are very different types. So, you know, there are the brownstones, but then there are also high-rises. And so, you've got a lot of different things going on. You know, it's always best to, to sort of see it live.
Oh, I agree. I, I agree. And that's what I've, when, when we have these types of complaints, we'll follow a team for a day or a half a day. You know, and when we go into the high-rise buildings, we'll follow them to the top floor and all the way down through the stairwells to make sure they're spraying all the points. When it's a building, a brownstone, we'll make sure that all the, all the touchpoints are addressed, that they're not, that they're not congregating in small areas and violating social distancing. So, we look at all these things, and I 100% agree, the best thing to do is to go onto site to look at it. We've done that many a times, and I'm happy.
And may I ask, when you've gone on site to Wise, I think you said you've been there 17 times. What, what's been said? What have you found?
So, some of the issues there that I can, I'm looking at my notes. I'm not, you know, sorry for not making contact with camera.
And the reason I'm asking the question is it gets to sort of the point that the person at 74 West 92nd Street said. You know, it's not just that you went to visit. So, I mean, it's a little unnerving actually that you've had to go back 17 times. Like, at what juncture do you say we're gonna cut bait?
Just to be clear, Councilmember, we're inspecting at random every day and following the schedule. So, as many months as we do the cleaning, Dan's group is going to be out there. We could wind up visiting some sites many, many more times than have. So, let me have Dan give you the, the results from those inspections.
I'm just saying there's a difference between quality and quantity.
Yeah, and I will say this, and I'll be very clear, because the GM has made it clear. We do see variations often from team to team, and some of those teams are no longer working for the contractor. So, we, we've been very aggressive with this, and we have the information from Dan's group and the other groups. And both the GM and I have talked about this quite a bit, and if we have to act, we will.
Yeah, and it's fair to the tenants to get back to them and say, you know what? We saw and we heard and we fired them. You're going to see another team come on. That's, that's reassuring, so people know they're being validated.
One more thing, Helen, it's not just Alliance, it's also NICA's workers. Our buildings have not been mopped in months. So, you have the issues with Alliance, and then you have the issue with the NICA workers. Nobody's mopping, and that's not part of Alliance, that's part of NICA. And there's no mopping being done in any of these buildings for months. That's unacceptable.
So, I, I can respond. So, when I say 17 times, you know, as, as the Chair indicated, we want to keep a constant surveillance over what the vendor is doing to make sure that they're maintaining a standard of quality. If you go once, as somebody said on the call, yeah, they might do well that day, but if you come back next week, they, they might have lost some staff and not be in, not be as strong as they were when you saw them the first time. So, to do monitoring properly, you need to have a consistent, consistent net of surveillance on the vendor to make sure that they're performing up to a good standard day in and day out. At Wise, you know, we have seen issues where they were not signing the logbook at the development. Therefore, that, that raises attendance concerns. We've corrected that. In addition, they, we had reports of them ringing doorbells at the brownstones and disturbing tenants. We actually made some staffing changes with the vendor after we received complaints about that, and that was pretty recent. That was, I think, about a couple of weeks ago. So, we want to make sure that they are, they are maintaining quality. And if there are problems, that we're, that we're getting new staff in there to, to address it, or new management, new supervisors in there to address it. So, I'll, I'll make a trip up there this week to see what they're doing. They're there three times a week, so it's easy to go up there and check on it. And I agree, I'm happy to meet whoever would like to, to walk through it. I've done that at other developments, a number of other developments where I've met a TA president or even a resident to go through the cleaning protocol with them. And generally, it's been very helpful because I think one thing to understand, and I think Ms. Tibbs raised a very good point, these vendors are just doing the touchpoints. So, they're not doing like the deep cleaning that one might expect. So, part of it is kind of understanding what the vendor should be doing. But sometimes it's also a performance issue. On the mopping and on the general cleanliness, we've got that complaint a lot into our portal over the past three weeks as, as our, as our residents start to understand the difference between what the vendor is doing and what our, what our caretakers need to be doing. And so, we have added janitorial inspections to our, to our portfolio as we're, as we're doing these inspections. So, what, when we come out there, we'll also do a janitorial inspection of, of the, of the conditions to check on things like mopping and other cleanliness conditions that are in the, that are in the responsibility of our caretaker. So, we're happy to do that as well this week, to check in on it, to see how it's going, and then to take any corrective action if necessary.
Chair Russ, were you going to follow up on that? I saw you.
Yes, I was going to say that Vito and I have talked about this. Dan has brought these complaints forward. We are going to be doing quality assurance checks on the NICA staff. And we're also thinking about doing the cleaning differently going forward and thinking about how we can make the best use of our staff and the best use of contractors because it's a common complaint, and I've seen it myself, and there's going to be more to come on this. So, I can say that for sure.
Great. Well, this has been so helpful. I actually am going to move on to another subject area. And what I'm going to ask you about now, and there were a few other questions in the sanitation area, but we'll send those to you and, and ask, you know, for your response on those offline. Were, there's a set of questions around sort of health and general welfare, whether or not NICA would be willing to set up a COVID-19 test site at Amsterdam Houses or Wise Consolidation and Douglas Houses. I'll start there.
So, we, the Housing Authority does not set up the testing locations. That's done by health and hospitals and the vendor, the ready responders. We can pass that information on to both groups. And in fact, I think City MD storefronts are now also going to become part of the testing option that, that folks will have. We're glad to cooperate at any location, but in this case, we don't actually control the schedule. We can support it, however. And we have additional sites that we can make available to you where, where they are, either nearby or close. And then we can let both the vendor and health and hospital know that, that you've made that request and see if we can. Because considering where we started with just a half dozen, we're now up to many. And the goal, of course, for all of us is to get to citywide.
Okay, great. People are concerned about seniors in their buildings who may be isolated or mobility-challenged without any family to make sure that they're, you know, getting what they need. Will NICA set up some sort of call system to help them?
Sure. Let's, I'm going to have Sadiya speak to that, and she can tell you what we've been doing, what's going to be coming, what's already happening, and how it connects back to the question that you just, just asked.
Great.
Sure. Hi, this is Sadiya Sherman, the EVP for Communication and Partnerships. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Great, thank you for having me. So, the, the answer to that is yes, we absolutely can set that up, and I can give you a sense of what we've been doing so far and also what's coming down the line. So, at the beginning of this crisis, NICA issued a number of different types of communications to residents through robocalls, emails, flyers, et cetera, to really make sure people were aware of the precautions around COVID as well as resources that were available. And many of those robocalls have continued throughout this process. What we additionally have done is dedicate a team within my area that has been making individual calls to seniors as well as residents who have a known social service history with NICA to ensure that they're specifically aware of the COVID precautions, connecting them to food or other resources that they may need at this time, connecting folks to medication and other medical supports, as well as helping residents navigate other city services. And so, at this point, we've made over 70,000 of those personal individual calls. We've had direct assessments with over 41,000 residents. We've had touchpoints. We've, we've had calls with over 1,100 residents in your district in particular. And I would just add that this is not happening in isolation. So, within your community, there are obviously CBOs who are also providing this level of outreach. So, God at Riverside in particular, Presbyterian Services, so that's happening. And we've also collaborated with the Department of Aging so that NICA and DIFTA have a uniform script that we're using so that whether you get a call from NICA or if you get a call from DIFTA, it's the same resources. We're tracking in the same way, and we're making sure that there's no wrong door within the community. I would also add that recently, we've finalized a partnership with New York Cares, which we're really excited about. And through that partnership, New York Cares is bringing on a group of volunteers who do this type of work regularly, who will be able to have dedicated calls for NICA seniors. And so, in order to move that forward, NICA has issued a small set of robocalls to seniors who are interested in that service so that they can opt in. Then, then that call will be expanded across the entire city of seniors, so they can also opt in. And if residents choose to opt into that, they would then share their information with New York Cares, and they can get regular friendly visiting calls and other calls from, from, from seniors, I mean, from New York Cares. I mean, from New York Cares. If they additionally want more follow-up calls from NICA, they can indicate that as part of that call as well. So that is ongoing, the, the calls from NICA are continuing, the calls from New York Cares have just started. And then, as I mentioned, there's calls still happening locally with the community-based organizations in your group as well as with the Department for the Aging.
Okay, that's a lot. And it seems like we are gonna be asking you to add some names to those calls. So thank you for that.
Sure.
Go ahead.
I would just add that, you know, particularly for resident associations, if there are seniors, non-seniors, residents in your building that you're particularly concerned about or individuals that you want us to make sure we're reaching, please pass that information on, we can do that today. And so we, we are continually, we also regularly receive referrals from resident associations who are bringing to our attention tenants they may be concerned about, and we're able to make that outreach as well.
Okay, that's good to know because I'm hearing offline from some of the TA leaders that their seniors are not on the list to get calls and they're not getting any calls. So, you know, can we say, Sadia, that if people give us the apartment numbers or names, we can pass that along to you via Vivian? Does that make sense?
Sure, yes, I think I was muted. So if, yes, please pass along their information. And I can also follow up with your staff just around, and then the TAs in your district around the calls that we've made specifically.
Oh, that would be great. Yeah, super. Okay, and then here's the next set of questions around the same sort of topic, getting people the support they need. Would NICA consider inserting a flyer in the rent notices that go out every month with a list of phone numbers to call for help with obtaining food, health services, school information, social services, maybe even domestic violence support? And along those lines, does NICA have a system when DB survivors switch, transfer to a different building? For example, do you have a checkup call with them to sort of see how they're doing? And this question comes from tenant leader's experience of a, an abuser following that survivor and, and still that survivor having lots of problems.
So I'll ask maybe Sadia to fill in behind me. But NICA's primary focus is the housing and potentially moving a person when there's an emergency transfer due to domestic violence. We do have a partnership with Safe Horizons. And I think Sadia, that might get to part of the question anyway, if you could fill in.
Sure, yeah. So, so NICA does have a partnership with Safe Horizons. Our application and tenancy unit regularly refers residents who are, or applicants as well who are experiencing domestic violence or who are survivors to that group as a resource. That's also built into the portal as part of the transfer process. So when someone is located in their new apartment or they transfer to a new apartment, they've been afforded that connection to Safe Horizons as a service provider. NICA does not additionally provide that case management post relocation. And, and also, it's also confidential to, to the property when someone has transferred. But if there are specific tenants that someone knows of or there's an issue, again, I would, one, like ask that they share with your office so they can let us know. We can certainly reach out to our partners to offer that assistance. But if they're, but they can also share that information, particularly the resident associations with their coordinator, and we can get that to the right team.
Great, thank you. Actually, I'm, I'm remembering, I have two more amazing tenant leaders I have to introduce. Ramona Minor is here. She is, has been the resident leader for De Hostos and, and just has done a tremendous job. Our office really counts on her, and I know her tenants do. Ramona, are you still on? Do you want to ask about your building in particular or anything you like? Go for it.
Yes, how are you? Thank, thank everybody for being here. Really appreciate this. My concerns are safety issues. I think I just submitted asking PA six. When you have an issue and we call them, they tell us, call 911. And then when you call 911, they tell us, this is not their issue, it's PA six. So who do we call?
It's a great question. I'm gonna hope that PSA six Sergeant Lane, yeah, go ahead.
Hello, how you doing? My name is actually Officer Webb, Sergeant Lane of Dallas, Utah. I could definitely help. I'm one of the NCOs for the two-floor precincts that cover all the developments besides Douglas. And, and with that question, I know Ramona, I know Ramona well, she knows my partner Joe King very well. Are there specific issues that people are telling you that that's not a 911 call? Because you, I know you know, you call us on our cell phones, we always.
Well, first of all, we have, yeah, I'm sorry. But first of all, we have a very bad issue that I'm being called all time of night because I'm that TA president that picks up the phone anytime of night because I would want somebody to do that for me. And some of the tenants are crying out about certain issues and feeling unsafe in this building. NICA is aware of that. I think there were some emails that were done and they said it was a police issue. And so I don't know.
I mean, so can I just ask Ramona, is this having to do with your door being, your building door being perpetually broken? Which, by the way, is not just your building. I walked straight into other buildings this weekend.
Yeah, they fixed the door. I'm very happy about that because, you know, the buzzer is working now and it's working better than it's ever worked. And this is my second term, so this is great. But it's not that. There's other things that are going on that's out of hand. And nobody's doing anything about it. And my seniors are very, very nervous. They shouldn't feel like that. You know, most of them have been here since the building was first up. And, you know, they shouldn't feel like that at all.
You know, can I just ask real quickly? Because we've worked together for a long time, and I know you've had some real issues about this. I just want to triple check this information. PSA six reports to NICA or to, to the NYPD?
The NYPD.
Okay, so for that reason, I'm going to take this question offline a little bit. It's been brought out publicly now. And Ramona, let me follow up with you with the NYPD, so we can get some real answers here.
Thank you.
Council member, one thing, if there is an issue involving the building, please let us know because we have a great collaboration with NYPD and we've, we've done a lot of work in many locations. And if we team up, we can team up.
Thank you, really appreciate that.
Well, I have a, I have a question for you. I have a question for you. With that, with people on the roof all time of night and that door being opened up there, that seems like that's a NICA problem, correct?
That could be, yes. And we, we could take a look at it as part of your conversation and make sure if it's something that needs to be fixed, that we can fix it.
That's huge. Thank you, Ramona. I really appreciate your bringing that up in particular. And then lastly, I just want to give Amy Bookman a chance. She's the tenant leader for Sandra Thomas, our all-senior building. Amy is the extraordinary new tenant leader. Amy, can I just say what you've done for your seniors around food and making sure they have access to food has been extraordinary during this crisis? So I want to thank you publicly for that. But do you have a specific question that you'd like to raise? And I know Amy joined us by phone. So, all right. Amy, if you have a question, you can break in anytime and, or text Vivian, and Vivian will text me and we'll get you back on. Let's see, Chair, tenants would like to know how many, tenants would like to know how many people have been affected by the coronavirus in each of their developments? I don't know if that's something that you share, the number of people who have tested positive, perhaps the number of people who have passed away. But I, I think there's, there's one specific follow-up question, if you can share that information publicly, which is, do you have a cleaning disinfecting staff go into those apartments and, and do just a very deep, deep clean? And the question also applies to how many NICA staff in our area has tested positive and has passed away?
So we should just take a minute. We've lost folks, and I think that we, if all of us just recognize that is what we're living through. And, you know, it's just a hard, hard thing. And I want to acknowledge that at the beginning. The Department of Health actually collects this information. We, we do not get information unless a resident or even employee chooses to self-identify to us. We would not, we would not get that information directly. And we don't, we can say, based on the information that we have for developments in your area, there's been a total of one hundred and eleven cases that can be confirmed. And there's been five individuals confirmed that have been, been lost. That's on the resident side. And there's, you know, other data out there. At some point, maybe we can share that and observations on that. But NICA does tend to show issues similar to other parts of the city, particularly underlying conditions, which I think the speaker mentioned at the beginning of this conversation. That's a huge factor, age and underlying conditions. So with respect to employees, through today, we have one hundred and ninety-six self-identified positive cases and additional two hundred and seventy-one that are not confirmed but may be COVID. And we've lost ten employees.
Oh, wow.
As a result of the virus, yeah. Were you going to ask a question, council member?
Um, no. Was that just in our developments?
No, that's citywide.
Citywide.
Yeah, citywide, I'm sorry. So that's everybody, all five boroughs. And as to the cleaning, we, if, if there's a vacant unit turnover, we would hold that unit for some time, up to seventy-two hours. The virus and, and most of the surfaces in the apartment does not linger. And we would go in and turn the unit if that's, if that's the case and follow our normal practices in, in doing that, that unit turn. There's not a, one of the things that, it's like a recent lab test that shows that although the virus may be on the surface of, like, if there's light or even sunlight around, it degrades more rapidly. As we learn more about the science of this thing, we can make adjustments. But, but right now, we let that unit sit and that greatly reduces the chance that the virus is active or even contagious.
I'm going to go back. I was thinking about Sandra Thomas, but actually, we have Amy Bookman from Douglas Rehab. I'm hoping she's still on the line. You know, she's, it's, it's her building that where, where there was terrible fire and quite a few people lost their apartments. And so I'm, Amy, if you're on the line, feel free to ask a question. Or I, and also, while she's getting on the line, I'm just wondering what the timing looks like between NICA and Kraus working on the, on the fire, the apartments that were, were burned? What's the timing on making necessary repairs? And the families that were displaced, thankfully got housed, but they were sent all around to different boroughs. They really want to come back. Can we have your assurance that as soon as they are, those apartments are fixed, that they will be able to come back to their homes?
Sure. I mean, we transfer in this case for an emergency reason. You know, unless someone lands in a spot that they like better, we're not necessarily in the business of requiring people to, to stay put. I don't have, I don't know if Vito, if you can add anything on the timing. I don't have any latest late information on the timing of the repairs and so forth, but we could get that to you unless Vito's got an update.
Sure, thank you. Great. I have some information I can share. So, and yes, it's unfortunate, especially, a fire is never an easy situation to deal with. And especially during these times, it's even more difficult for everyone to deal with. And I do want to thank everyone for their patience and for their understanding. So currently, the situation at Douglas Rehab, and Councilwoman, as you and I have shared some of the updates, the electricity had been restored shortly after the fire. We do have electricity in the public hallways and the A, B, C, and D lines. Right? Late last week, hot water was restored to the building, which was good news. We never lost water service, but the hot water has been restored. We also approved Kraus Management to secure a contractor, which they did, to file for an emergency permit to get the gas restoration work underway. So the, the pressure test that is required by the Department of Buildings was being performed today. And that pressure test was being performed on both the header to the gas main coming in as well as to the A through F line. And that will determine then whether or not we need to do a full gas re-pipe in order to get the cooking gas services restored. Or if it passes, then it's a much easier, simpler process. We're still evaluating the conditions in the fire damage units and working with Kraus Management to come up with a plan of action to get those units restored. And of the forty households, as you mentioned, eighteen of the households have accepted temporary relocation and have been placed elsewhere. We tried to do our best to find apartments within the borough, but that wasn't always possible. Fourteen of the families have told us that they did not need temporary assistance, that they're staying with relatives. And five of the, of the families have opted to remain in place. Five of the units, so they're still, they're in their apartments. And we've checked those apartments to ensure that they're safe. Again, not that there isn't additional work that needs to be done, but safety, especially with respect to egress, was of primary concern to us. And then there are three other households. One individual had been hospitalized prior to the fire. And we're still working with that individual's family. And then there were two individuals who we just have not heard from since the fire. So we're getting updates from our staff. We are working, again, with Kraus Management, and we're monitoring the work that they're doing very closely.
Thank you.
Where they, sure, I was going to say where, if, if it comes to a point where there's work that needs to be done that they cannot do, we are ready to step in and do that work through our operations teams.
That's great. So do you have a sense like, would you, I'm making this up, between six months and a year, do you think, before people get back in?
Well, a- again, the good news is that there are already, there are still, there are already some households that have returned.
Yeah.
If we're talking about full occupancy, I think six to nine months is probably about right. That was, that would be for all 40 households. But again, our goal is to try to restore as many units as we can, as quickly as we can, so people could start to return to their homes, even before the last unit is complete.
Terrific, thank you so much for that, Vito. And again, I really appreciate, you and I were on the phone once at 11 o'clock at night trying to help somebody who needed a place to stay that night. I really appreciate everything you've done for our community. I see it's 4:12, we meant to stop at four. Chair Russ, is it okay if we go to 4:30 and then a hard stop?
Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you. I want to talk a little bit about the mayor's initiative for seniors. And specifically, I'm wondering if the seniors who live in public housing on the Upper West Side, have they received iPads? How can they apply? And will the, how about air conditioners? And how do they apply for that?
So I'm going to ask Sadia to talk about the criteria for the iPad and Vito to talk about the criteria for air conditioners.
Sure, so I'll start with the iPad. So the iPad was a generous offer from the, the CTO office. The criteria for those iPads were seniors who lived alone or lived with another senior. The outreach started in neighborhoods identified by the CTO office that were the most disconnected from, from internet technology based on their assessment. It then expanded citywide to seniors who lived alone or with, or were, or lived in a senior-only unit. So the primary form of outreach was robocalls based on that criteria set by the CTO's office. And then we also shared with resident leaders in our newsletter, contact information for our team, so that if there were seniors who they needed to refer, or if there were folks within their, their building who met that criteria that they can send it directly on. I think at this point, the majority of the tablets have been committed, where I don't have a final update of exactly all the allocations, and so we'll get that information. And then we're waiting to confirm what, if any, leftover supply there is so that we can have one last round of outreach. I would also add that there was also a process set up for senior centers to be able to refer clients that they're serving who live in NYCHA who are socially isolated, obviously with the goal of being able to have wellness checks through video chat and other services. So as soon as we have an update of where all of the, the tablets were deployed, we certainly can share with your office the final count in your district.
Okay, and are people going to be set up to learn how to use the tablets?
Yes, yeah, so the great thing about the tablets is that they come with service provision from Oats, which is older adult technology services.
They're great.
Yeah, and so they'll be able to provide remote services to seniors and teach them how to use the iPads. The iPads come preloaded with a number of apps. They come preloaded with City Resources. The NYCHA app is built into it as well. And then we've also worked to facilitate some connections with the Brooklyn Public Library, the Queens Public Library, other resources that would be able to help provide programming for seniors through the tablets.
Great. You know, could I ask, would you consider putting that, I mean, that information again in the rent bill for the senior homes?
The
Go ahead, Sadia.
So, so I just want to clarify, information about the tablets specifically or, or all the, or that, that general resource information?
Both.
Okay, so I think so for the tablets, because the criteria was very specific, that outreach was more targeted. But I think the point around just having general resource information, I think that's something we can certainly work to get in. I know there's been general coronavirus information in, in our rent statements, but we can get something more specific about resources, particularly the resources that are recurring, so that, you know, like the, in the, the rent statement goes, it hits all households, so we'll make sure it's something that everyone can take advantage of.
Thank you. You know, before, I forget if it was Brian or Vito to jump in about the ACs. I'm trying very hard to get the information out about domestic violence resources that are available from the city. People don't, I think I've heard people don't really know that the 1-800 number is still going. Counselors are available to talk with people. The Family Justice Centers are open, albeit by phone and email. And so NGBB has a great flyer on it. And I, I wonder if that in particular, we could talk about that offline, but that going
Yes, we'd be, we'd be glad to. And talk to you about what we could help with.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure, if I can just quickly talk about the air conditioning units. So as hopefully everyone has heard by now, the mayor made an announcement about providing, I believe it's 75,000 air conditioners. That's for all of New Yorkers. We have been identified to receive 22,000 of those. The mayor's contributing $5 million. NYCHA is putting in $10 million and through NYSERDA and ConEdison, there's another 1.5 million being contributed. That in total is for the 22,000 units. The criteria for receiving one of these air conditioners, it's, again, they're being made available to seniors, 60 years or older, and/or for persons with mobility impairment or on life sustaining equipment, who already do not have an air conditioner. So last week, we pushed out about 32,000 robocalls to the population that we have in our database of residents that meet this criteria. Right, and what we've done is we started to make callbacks to residents that have hit the acceptance button. So some folks, when the robocalls went out, said, yes, I would like to receive one. So we already have staff, in fact, by tomorrow, we'll have 40 people dedicated to making callbacks to those residents. Right, if a resident believes that they, believes that they missed the robocall or would like an opportunity to participate in the program, they can certainly call CCC. And they will be put into that program and receive a callback from someone that will ask for more information. The installations started last week. It was a pretty slow rollout last week, it was just the beginning. We have two vendors and a number of, of city agencies that are helping us with the installations. Today, we have 25 air conditioners scheduled for installation. Tomorrow, that number should be up to 50. And when we're at the peak, we're looking at probably about 1,000 installations a day. So we're slowly rolling up to that. And the goal is to have all of the air conditioners installed by July 1st. And that's a goal that the mayor had set. It's an ambitious goal. The mayor had set that for not just NYCHA, again, but for all 75,000 air conditioners that are being provided to seniors. In addition to which, we are also waiving the, the $8 a month fee that we would normally charge if you receive one of these air conditioners. I tried to be quick.
You were perfect. I'm getting a follow-up question from a TA leader. Are there any AC installations here on the Upper West Side?
Again, I, I don't have it broken down by development at this point. We can certainly start to, as we get, receive more information, have more data, we can certainly provide it by development. As of right now, that's a little premature.
Yeah, and similarly, Vito, I know NYCHA isn't really responsible for the food boxes, but we've gotten a couple of questions about those drop-offs to senior buildings and the concern that they're being left in the lobby and not going to people's apartments directly. Do you have anything to do with that? I mean, I know this is something I've brought up with the food czar Catherine Garcia. If, and what she said, by the way, is that if anyone notices that happening, they should immediately alert the city, and let's put a pin in that, but alert the city because she is canceling contracts with drivers who leave the boxes in lobbies. They've apparently already fired two vendors because of that exact problem. But anyway, does NYCHA work? Is NYCHA in the loop on that at all?
Yes, Sadia's been really, really deeply involved in, I could just let her just speak to the issue being raised.
Thank you.
Sure, so, so yes, I mean, everything that you said is, is correct in terms of the food czar team has been quickly responding to, to those types of concerns and complaints. There are a subset of NYCHA developments that are receiving bulk delivery. So it's a little different where same, same supply of food, but in those developments, the almost everyone is automatically enrolled and then they're opting out instead of opting in. And so that's something that we're looking to roll across all of our senior buildings, but we initiate it at 12. And those developments, NYCHA is managing, excuse my cat, NYCHA is managing the delivery process.
I want your cat.
They, they want to join the meeting. So NYCHA is managing the delivery process in those developments and that, that is a mix of CBO partners as well as part-time staff that we've brought on board to make sure that the boxes are getting to every door. But that's a little bit different than the delivery that's been happening through, through the, the one-off TLC drivers. And I know that the, the food czar has been working to address, to make sure that those issues are quickly. So again, we, we repeat that message certainly to report it as soon as it comes to our attention. And then we can certainly, you know, as we build a schedule for more developments to come on to the schedule for bulk deliveries, we'll make, make sure to let you know. Because in those instances, we will have partners and part-time staff in place who will manage that, those deliveries.
Sadia, is there anyone, are the, any of the buildings in my districts? I guess it would be Sondra Thomas that are enrolled yet.
So Sondra Thomas is not enrolled as of earlier this week, but I, I, we've been adding developments on a weekly basis. So I, I'll get the most updated, updated schedule. That's not the case as of today, but I'll let you know. And then we certainly know how many people in general are involved in that building.
And then, so if the tenant leader asks me directly, I could say, in a month, you might hear something or
Yeah, before that, yeah, I mean, we're working to do this immediately. So, you know, the, and that doesn't stop a senior right now from enrolling in meal delivery. The difference is for the senior buildings, rather than having people individually enrolled, we're just starting to bulk and enroll them into a bulk service. And then they would opt out in those instances, but the, the, the only impediment to us moving this faster is really our ability to bring on part-time staff and vendors to assist with the on-the-ground delivery. So as soon as those are in place, you should see more of these developments switch over to that delivery model very quickly.
Okay, great, thank you. I just want to make sure I get in a couple of quick questions that are being posted here at the end. Someone is asking Vito again for the telephone number for air conditioners.
Sure, so they should call CCC. And they should let them know that when they, when they call, that they're interested in receiving an air conditioner. And then they will get a callback from one of the trained operators. But again, we have 40 operators that are being trained specifically to deal with this initiative, but they should call CCC and say that they would like to participate in the program.
And there's a specific question from a gentleman, 69 years old, who says he has two air conditioners in his apartment. And, and I'm going to assume that he's had them for longer than this. Says he has healthcare issues and really needed them. Can he get assistance with paying for those air conditioners now? If she, if he calls CCC?
No, the, so if he has an existing air conditioner, we're required to charge what's called an excess utility fee. That's a requirement that HUD places. And I think it's, and Vito, correct me if I get it wrong, it's $8 a month during the summer months.
That's right, yeah.
And and is, is that per unit or per air conditioner? I'm not sure.
It's $8, I'm sorry, go ahead, Brian.
It's $8 per unit and it's all year-round. It's not just during the summer month.
Okay, so
Right, and I believe it's $8 for right, $8 to seniors, $10 for non-seniors.
Right, so we have been looking at whether or not we can afford to do anything with the fee. It, it, it actually brings in quite a lot of income that goes into the operating budget. So it's, it, I'm not sure I've got a good answer for this gentleman yet, but we would be, wouldn't be opposed to thinking about it. And, but I can't guarantee we can waive the fee because it's actually built into our operating.
Yep, that, I understand that. Let's stay in touch on that.
Okay, we, we will. We actually went back and forth over the weekend with a number of emails about the, the amount of the fee, the people being charged. And we were thinking with the inability to do cooling centers this summer, maybe we do something in a limited basis, but we'll, we'll come back to you when, if we, if we come to a solution.
Right, right, okay, thank you. Um, let's see, I, I, last set of questions, and then we're really going to sign off. There, there are quite a number of questions about people, residents having mental, mental health issues. COVID is exacerbating the situation. People are becoming more challenging to deal with. Is there a number that residents can call to get a neighbor help? Or what would you suggest?
I'm going to ask Sadia if we've got such a thing, I'm, I'm not sure.
Sure, so we have, so NYCWell, which is the city's mental health hotline, is really the, the best number to call. And you can also, I'm pulling just the, the number right now. There's also a text message option as well, too. I should add, in all of our communications, we've been including that information, so it's yeah, it's 888-NYC-Well. Again, that's 888-NYC-Well. We've been including that information in our communications. There was also a robocall that went out from Commissioner Brabo to NYCHA residents around precautions for COVID. It also included resources for the city. And then when we issue these wellness calls that I mentioned before, excuse, it's very loud in here, when we issue these wellness calls, as I mentioned before, when we are coming across residents who need mental health services, we've been able to connect them to NYCWell or other mental health resources during those assessments as well. But that's a, that's an easy number to share with your friends and family. You can also have online chats and they have a text message option as well, and this is 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Right, you know, what's interesting about that is I think the residents are asking, and let's talk about this offline because we only have a minute, but about what to do about a neighbor who's having issues. You know, for somebody to call NYCWell, they have to initiate that themselves. And not, you know, some people aren't doing that. So people are talking about their neighbors who maybe aren't getting the help they need.
Sure, so I would just add for the resident associations on this phone, if you have a particular neighbor that you need us to reach out to, and just please, as long as you share the unit, we can get the contact information. Share that information and we can reach out to them directly if we haven't already. So we'll, we can make that, that outreach.
Fantastic, well, I'd really like to thank Chairman Russ and, and everyone on your team for joining us today. I really want to thank the tenant leaders who have been gathering and submitting these questions and for everything you do for your residents. Of course, I want to thank my staff for their hard work pulling this event together. Vivian Rivera, who many of you know, who works directly with our NYCHA tenants, Julian De La Porta and Sarah Kreen and Madhuri Shukla and Risa Maak from my team who made that happen. Thank you guys so, so much. Madhuri Shukla and Risa Maak from my team who made that happen. Thank you guys so, so much. And as a reminder, you can visit Helen Rosenthal dot com for and click on the contact button to find out who who can help you specifically in my staff. You can sign up to get our e-bless. And you can learn about a whole wide range of available resources, particularly around COVID. If you posted a question, we will try to follow up with you. In particular, if you have a question that wasn't answered, email us, Helen at Helen Rosenthal dot com. And then we will be certain to answer any question or get you the answer to any any question. And one very quick reminder, if everyone could remember, please, please fill out your census form. The impact of not filling out the form is that New York City will get less money from the federal government. That money goes directly to NYCHA, among other things, as well as gives us better representation in Congress. So please fill out your your census form. If you're having troubles filling it out, just call my office. Someone will call you back and we can walk you through that. So I see, I think Chair Russ wants to say something. My last words are stay safe, stay indoors, and thank you for joining us. Chair Russ, did you want to sign off as well?
I just want to say thank you for hosting, council member, and thanks to my team for participating and providing information. And thanks to the resident leaders for their questions. Appreciate it.
Great. All right. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Bye-bye.